My handwriting by now?
It's seven o'clock, by the way. Sorry folks at home, the mayor is not ready yet. We will get started momentarily. I got you. We are live though. Heather, it's seven o'clock. If you would organize your show before the meeting.
Good evening. That is October 10, 2024, seven o'clock. Welcome to Village of Webster Board Meeting. And if you will stand with me all please for the pledge to truthfulness.
Attentive to regions to the flag of United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much.
Thoughts and prayers to Florida.
Oh, and, and I would say also, is it Tennessee? Because, uh, still country there.
From North Carolina?
Yeah. Like out, North Carolina as well, Asheville.
It's terrible.
Things are happening all around. Three thousand acres or something like that. Well, at this point in our agenda, we have public comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the speaking board? And I guess if there is no one, then I will close that public comment portion of the meeting. We will move to regular scheduled agenda. First of all, we have a resolution to approve the minutes of 26th, September 26th, Village Board Meeting. We have them in front of you. If you've been over, if you don't see any major problems with it, the additions. I would ask for a motion to approve.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
I'll say it.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next we have our claims and warrants. Looks like they filled a good sized packet to these. I looked through some, like Jerry, how you guys look through what I believe.
Yeah, what are computer speakers for Darrell? I can't even get my Apple iPad to work. Do you have speakers?
I have speakers. I have one out of two speakers that work, yes.
Also, it was user error because you had the jack plugged into the microphone one and not the other. Or the other one. But I fixed them all up. He's all set now. But yes, one did not work.
I'm just curious. Have you not bought candy yet?
Not yet.
I was gonna say, we should see some of that on here, so.
Very soon. It's coming.
Two weeks?
We already got the coupons all set up.
Okay. I didn't have any other questions, to be honest. Well, actually not that much.
What's that, you probably don't know, bar ton repair? There's 1,500 rocks that fix four tires. Emergency repair. Are they new tires?
It does sound, I don't remember. I can ask Jimmy though for you.
It's just a repair. That's pretty expensive.
I believe.
That's four new tires, alright.
I don't think we can take them back, huh?
No. She said, did you see a note on here? His Karen is leaving us notes in case there were things that we need to question. I'll find out for you and send you an email.
Well, shoot, I always thought that was weird working early and after it's spent.
And there's seven grand of some lawyers from here.
Don't know who that is.
It's our excellent attorney at law.
Don Mafio's attorney? If we can't get you settled, we'll jump to a table for you.
I see that both Danielle and Karen in the office are notaries now, so kudos to them.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Oh, did you ask for a motion?
Not yet.
Oh, I thought you were waiting on us.
But if you have the opportunity to look through whether there are any other questions. If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve.
Well, I would like to be the one to give you that motion.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, next we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with BPD to move forward with the sewer rate study. We had talked about this last time. And I thought that we would move on it this board meeting as well. That is before the board. This is to submit a study for sewer. Looking at historical information, projecting rate structure into the future, budgets and so on. So.
So it's just, there's no, it's just a 207 for hour?
Yeah, that's additional.
And plus the justin?
I looked at that a couple times.
And out of pocket expenses. Whatever that may be.
And I forgot, Danielle had an estimate. They estimated the number hours. I forgot what it was. She told us the last time.
Yeah, I wish I was kinda in here because this is very loose now.
Well.
Right?
It was just an estimate. It wasn't like they were gonna, it wasn't like they were gonna just fill up to a certain amount.
Right, they didn't say not to exceed four.
You got an estimated cost for them for hours. Do you have that?
What was the hourly rate?
207. Don had said you got what they asked for. I don't have.
It's not correct, huh?
Yeah, that was a 36.
A word of 36 hours. 36.
What are you having for dinner?
Jerry wants to know what you're having for dinner. Disappointing. Okay, thank you Danielle.
You're welcome.
Okay, bye.
So they estimated between 25 and 36 hours. If they come back at 60 hours, then I think you gotta, you know, question them.
Okay. If you're comfortable, Don, I.
I'll make a motion to authorize myself to sign the agreement.
I'll let you authorize yourself. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Trustee Alito?
You should not be able to go for yourself to sign them.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen? Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
He recused.
So it passes.
Yeah, good, oh.
Okay, next we have a resolution authorizing the board to adopt procedures for video conferencing local law. This is something that we do not have on books. But it is something that the. It's required by the state law. The new 103-a of the Public Officers Law is listed for this. Part of the open meetings law. And should have done this a while, you know, at the time we adopted the local law. No one's wanted to take advantage of it yet, but so it really doesn't matter. The only thing that you should be aware of is you have to send something in writing, via mail or something, with an explanation of your extraordinary circumstances to either, in the case of this board, to either the mayor, or if it's the mayor, to Gary, and then also to the village clerk. Just explaining your reason for seeking to participate by video conferencing. And again, the extraordinary circumstances are the disability, illness, caregiving, responsibility, and then the catch-all. Any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes a member's physical attendance at a meeting.
Wow, that's loose because unexpected factor, Don, he's taking a plane home to get here and it doesn't. The plane got delayed, that's, that's an unexpected factor why he couldn't be at the board.
Well, video conferencing?
Yeah.
Because every time you get to the airport, you know, it's got delayed.
Right, but if you physically can't be here, you have to email me. Now, I gotta give you approval. And if you missed your plane or it's delayed, by reading the way I read this, it's an unexpected factor event. Which did not allow your physical attendance.
Yeah, if you can set up video conferencing from some airport or wherever you're actually stuck.
Okay.
That, that would suffice if.
That's new, isn't it? Wasn't it before they didn't have that? It was really gonna be ill? It's always been that?
It's always been in the, in the state law.
Okay.
The same language, because all the rest of this stuff is basically verbatim out of the state law. Except for the part about giving notice as soon as practical to either the mayor or the deputy mayor and also the village clerk. Just so there's something on record explaining why you're doing it by video conferencing. So. You need a motion to adopt this policy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I don't think the mayor asked for it yet.
Well, I'll ask for a motion to authorize the village board in total to adopt the procedures.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers? Motion passes. Do I need to email that to the state? Okay.
It just goes in the village's policy. You probably should send out copies to, well, this board's got one. With the zoning board members, the parks and recreation members, and historic, well, there's no planning board anymore, that's zoning board. Historical preservation conditions. Those are the three other boards, just so they're aware of it. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the master road dedication and land transfer agreement with the town of Webster and Xerox Corporation. I believe that this was sent out to all of you. It is something that you've been looking at in the past months. It is a dedication agreement and land transfer regarding Panama and Orchard Street. It is also involving Mitchell Dean, Phillips to Salt, and also a piece of property that is at the south part. You can see it just below Orchard Street. I believe that is in the civic, that is here. Yeah, that's the exact beat. So the 6.6 acres in the, that's in paragraph three of the agreement. And Xerox has promised that it will dedicate it to the village after, at some mutually agreeable time, after their basically west campus is rezoned, which is contemplated under the master plan that they've been working on. You know, to be a combination of residential and commercial and stuff. And now it's zoned industrial, but it's gotta get rezoned. So they said when the rezoning happens, they'll give the 6.6 acres to the village. So they'll also, they'll also give a paragraph three B is an easement for a multi-use trail along the west side of Phillips Road, basically from Chiota, Chiota down to Orchard Street. And Xerox did agree that with Orchard, with Orchard and Panama, that they're gonna pay all the expenses incident to that dedication, preparing the survey and all the other stuff. Before they handed the village was gonna.
Yeah, that's a big.
Yes, big.
So.
Great.
So they were pretty good about it. They readily agreed that they would do all the due diligence. The deal with Mitchell Dean is, is the village doesn't have to take dedication of it until there are sufficient funds, which at present there, there are, to re-hail. Your village is about $700,000 short at present. At present. And there's always a hope that there are a couple of companies that may become part of helping that. So we'll see. See if they have an interest that it happens to. But it's a good agreement for the.
Well, the museum, they've had, we've had one tour already of some of Xerox buildings. And we're gonna do another one in two weeks, three weeks. Have another group go down and take a walk. We did very, very informative. The people that didn't know anything about Xerox. They were quite nice about everything.
That's great.
But yeah.
Alright, so this is.
Great.
Before the board to pass. If I can sign this master road dedication and land transfer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The agreement, it does say it can be signed in counter cards. But if you might wanna, after you sign it, you know, have someone deliver it to the town supervisor. They're voting on it, I believe, next Thursday. Right. And I know, I know the supervisor wanted to withhold his signature until Xerox signed it. But they had it for John Barrett signing it. He's local, so it's not gonna get sent to Connecticut for someone from Xerox to sign it. He was worried like the agreements with Fairlife and Coca-Cola. He said they took forever because, well, he said one got signed by some officer of Coca-Cola who's in Paris or something like that. Took forever to get the documents back. I don't think we're gonna have this problem with Xerox since John Barrett works here at Webster. And they, they reviewed it and got back to us within a week after. Very quick. They were very quick. So they're anxious to get.
That's impressive.
Okay, it was signed and it will be delivered to the town. They'll be meeting next week and anticipate their signing it and then it will go on from there. Thank you. Okay, next we have a resolution to schedule a special meeting of the village board for November 4, 2024 at 6:00 PM for a public hearing on the Village Brownfield Opportunity Areas Program Master Plan and Nomination Study. This is noted also at the bottom of your agenda for this special meeting. I guess it needs to be set so that there can be one in 30 days, I think it is. Yeah, because it's a, because it's a public hearing, you gotta publish notice of the public hearing. And then the 30 days, the public has 30 days to comment. That starts running when it gets published in the Herald. So the 30 days won't be up by November 4th, but shortly after that, it'll be up another week or so.
So that's the fourth. Will all the machines be up for the election?
I would think so.
So I think we have to think about that, but aren't they in this room?
They gotta go to the little room?
If they are in that.
Yeah, they, they usually come Monday, like afternoon.
Yeah.
But they don't set up. They usually set up in the morning, so they're usually just set over to the side until they get there first thing in the morning.
Yeah, we don't need anybody around those machines.
You'll come in and tag that in.
Well, we can use a small meeting room.
Alright, well, I just, I didn't.
I didn't think of that. I thought no Tuesday because election day, but.
Well, if you're gonna change it because the notice I did says large meeting room.
Okay.
But if they have the machines off to, on the wall, why not do it in here?
Yeah, they've never said we can't use it. If they're locked up, they're, they have a key, so.
I thought it was gonna be a huge crowd, but it just, it just looks better than it.
Yeah, I didn't know. I thought they had them all spread out when they got here the day before, but.
6:00 AM they usually do that.
6:00 AM, you start voting at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, you start voting.
So I think they should answer.
I think, actually, they come at 5:30.
Mine are coming, that Peter's doing, he was in our school, they wrote, and they're coming at 4:00.
Want me to text Peter?
Or why don't you, or call Peter and ask him?
Yeah, let's get him. Let's call a friend. Or he's watching right now. Peter, can you answer the question? Can you please call that line?
Karen said, because they did the same thing at the town, that the voting machines are just off to the side and you can use the.
There you go.
They set up.
The comment, I mean, you were probably lying there.
But then you don't have to change the notice that was prepared. Don't say the large at the community meeting.
Want me to call Peter just to be sure?
No, no, she said they're aside.
It's a good thought. I didn't think of that. I'm sorry.
Probably for the most part the chairs will be stacked except for the couple of voters.
Well, and to make things easier, I'll get rid of most of the chairs and just leave a few.
Oh, yeah.
Two chairs, you're ready to move on.
You're special ready. You get a chair.
Put his name on that.
So, we have a resolution. Are there any other questions regarding?
Yeah, no, fine.
No, that makes sense.
Alright, so I'll ask for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll third it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy and Trustee Alito? Trustee Valkeen? Mayor Byers?
We shared that one.
Motion passes. Twinning.
Heather, do you have the actual study that if people come in the village hall?
Yes, it's in a binder in color, all 170 pages. It's all ready to go. And I have the notice ready to be sent.
Yeah, give it to the Herald.
Okay, and I'll post it. Got it. And it's right out front.
If you are interested in looking at it, is it in a binder? Is it on the front desk there? On the village hall, welcome to come in and work for it.
You have the link you consent, so you can just open up the link and look at it virtually instead.
It's also posted, gonna be posted if it hasn't already. It'll be on the village's website.
So you can get that.
And we'll put it on Facebook too.
Which, by the way, we received a letter this past week with kudos to the village, specifically, I think Karen, who has put together the newsletter and, you know.
Wow.
It's out there for the public to look at and it's very informative of the things that are going on in the village.
She is awesome. Nice job, Karen.
And many, many comments on our Facebook page thanking, saying how well the village is doing communicating with residents. So, I'm very proud.
Good job. You got a good team, Heather.
I really do.
Nothing that readily comes to mind.
Looks like the clerk has another binder, so.
No, I saw you down there. I texted him and I was like, is he coaching?
You had some private meeting here?
Yeah.
Alright, let's try it.
Okay. Missed a couple names. Yeah, my brother's team beat his team already.
Big game Monday night.
For first place.
Okay, so first thing is that we were kind of going back and forth about getting rid of our current phone system. Because they're really not great to work with and I don't wanna say it.
What's the cost?
Actually, this will be, this will be cheaper. We're just, we already have Spectrum, so I just...
It's the first time you've come to this board with something cheap.
And...
I think we signed it.
That's not true. Yeah, sorry I said that, but it's just, we're not, we don't love it. It's not great. And it's not user friendly either, and this will help Jake, and I've also been talking to him about it. This will help the after-hours phone. It'll be an app for the guys. So it will no longer have to go through their phone. They won't have to call. Yeah, right now, they take a phone home, our spare phone, our office spare, actually, their was home. They take that home and, or that's left in the office and then we transfer from there to their personal cell phones.
That's personally on a call for that night?
Yeah, for a week and a week, yep. And Jake keeps the phone all week. Dirt and snow watching stuff. So with this way, they, and they have to hit star six seven to call out from their personal phones when the calls come in, or they just answer it on their personal numbers.
And that's interesting how they do that to their personal phones.
They do get a stipend for the personal phones. It's $1.50 for the year. Yeah, but, which, and they would still take calls during the week to their phones if things happen, if they get called in, so that would still be valid, that would still be valid, but they wouldn't have to call residents from their personal phones. So it'd be an app that they would download on their personal phones, and it would call out from our phone number. And it's a Spectrum app. And it's gonna cost us about $3.80 a month. And that includes the phone, the service, everything. And we did, I'm gonna come back next time and kind of show you everything, but we did a cost comparison and it's actually cheaper. So stay tuned.
So that would transfer over also the phones of the office?
Yes. So 11 phones, yours, all of ours up, up front, and obviously Jake and Jimmy, and then the one sewer phone. It would not take place over the plant line, that's separate. So it's 11 phones, and we don't... Another good thing about this is that if something goes wrong with the phone, we're almost essentially leasing it. We don't have to pay for it if something goes wrong. They replace it.
So the office phone is transferred over to...
So the office phone transfers over, is that what you said? Gerald said transfers to this personal phone.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Office phone transfer to cell phone?
No.
Okay. I thought that's what Gerald said.
No, I was just saying...
And you said yes?
Oh, he wanted to know if the office phones will be replaced. I apologize. Yeah, so he wanted to know if all of our phones would be replaced with these Spectrum phones.
And what was the original issue? Why, why are your, what happened? What's happening?
It's just kind of tough to work with. It's an antiquated system.
Just struggling with the customer service.
Thank you, sorry.
So you're getting all new phones? Is there any term left then with this NFP company?
We're just, they're trying to get us to resign. So we're at the end of it. And we own the phones we have now. So we're gonna, then we're gonna sell those or put them to bid or whatever. So if anything goes wrong with them, they replace it, no questions asked, and then we don't have to, because these phones are around, they can cut, cost upwards of like $500 for the phone. And one of the things that happened was they quoted us for phones. It was $5.60 per phone, approximately. And we found them on Amazon, the same phones, and they asked us to report the seller, to give them the name, the information, because they were mad that we didn't buy from them, and it's just not best, so... Because I was trying to save money, Jerry. So I wanted to ask, do, I don't, it's a, so it's over, it's a three-year contract. And it's the $3.60 or something, but there's no other upfront cost. Oh, and they all, because we're already a Spectrum customer, I asked them to waive the install $500 fee, and they did. So there's no upfront cost other than the first month.
Well, they're gonna give you some kind of an agreement, right?
Yeah. But since it's under the, I wasn't sure if I needed like quotes or, because it's under, it's under the thousand. Is that different for Spectrum, for phone things?
Well, it's $300 a month, so you multiply it times 12.
Yeah, the contract's not under it.
Okay, I was just making sure. We already have called other companies. We called who the town uses.
I don't know what the purchasing agreement... You're not purchasing them, so it's sort of, doesn't even follow into the purchasing policy.
Right, no. I just wanted to make sure I'm doing what I need to do.
You're basically leasing, leasing all these phones for $300, whatever you said a month.
Right.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I need, what I need to do to make sure to get more approval and...
Well, that's what I'm saying. They're gonna, they're gonna give you some kind of an agreement that sets all this out for the price type, three years, all that stuff.
Yes.
Then we get on the board and authorize the mayor or somebody to sign it.
And we're actually working with Jason Grenet. So he's our contact, so he's local. And that's the difference with the internet. It's a local, it's local, our person is.
Didn't we have a Grenet?
Yes, Judy.
Judy? And her husband just passed away. He's in our call booth tonight.
Okay, so, sorry. So I'll get that back to you. I, I noticed a mistake in the contract. They forgot to list the sewer plant, so going back and forth for that. So I'll bring that next time and I'll send that to Don. I'm trying. This is the first time I actually have some things. Okay, second thing, I reached out to Nikon about the handbook update that I mentioned last time, about the cancer screening. And I was correct when I said that it's four hours for any type of cancer, that's it. You get the four hours and you can use it. You can split it up between different appointments, but the four hours is at any time over that you have to use your own time. And I included the article that he sent.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I asked him for a sample policy of the other thing I mentioned. And he said he doesn't have one yet because it's just so new. So I'm still working on that. The foil one I mentioned, that I had to alert employees if anyone foils their employee records. Okay, so I'll be back with that, and I gave you some information to read up on for next time. And then last thing, there, we already talked about the website, so that's great. Trick or treat trail is going really well. We're working out the kinks, but we're hoping everyone can come. We'll be up in this room as per usual, so get back to you on that. Yes, are you?
Sure.
Great. We love when you come. So I have, as you noticed, I decorated the front this year as well to make it look nicer. That should look good. And then just last thing, Veterans Day is the luncheon will be happening in here. It's Monday, 11, November 11. And we would love to have you all come to help out and show our support. And same thing, we'll be getting food from Rema again. And it'll be right after the ceremony, which I think is usually around 11 to 12.
November 1?
11.
Carol will be there, I'll be serving her.
Yep.
Well, we would love to have you here helping us, too, because I know that will definitely, I really love seeing everybody's faces.
What time you want us here?
If you could be here by 11, that would be great.
That's what I thought.
11 o'clock is the ceremony down at the park.
I may need some Thursday hours down there.
Yeah.
Is the first, second, or that?
This will be our first. In-person lunch? Yes, this will be our, we'll just...
Do you need to...
And that's all I have?
Thanks, Heather, for that.
Thank you.
Very brief update.
Do anybody have anything from Jake? I don't think we heard anything from him.
I thought he was coming.
Quiet.
What's going on, where is?
Does anybody know I don't want to...
He was on vacation, and he went down himself.
That's what I see.
His son, in his white suit.
So I sent him to him and talked to him.
Instead of taking the time like this, we ate.
I feel like I was so quicker.
All right. Does anyone else have anything?
Oh, we have, there's another thing on the agenda.
There is, let me look.
We have to set the, we have to set the, your other agenda, number six. We have to, we have to set the special meeting.
We already did that.
We did.
Why was I?
No, I don't know, you called the old hall for the vote.
Oh, you were...
I'll be right in. Sorry, just making sure. I'm giving a lot of things here. Sorry, just wanted to make sure. Did I save the time and everything? 6:00 to 12:00?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure, so...
I suggest you head to urgent care after this.
I did fall really bad, actually, Friday after the game, and I almost needed stitches.
Or a vice?
No, I didn't.
If there is something else, I guess we covered it all.
Sorry.
And I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll...
If you're in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for watching. Heather, can you ask Jimmy?
I think it's turned on this... It'll be better.